Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 26, 2015 workshop of the Orlando City Council. We have two subjects today. The first will be the Dr. Phillips Center and then the Paramore Neighborhood Plan. So we're going to start with an update on all of the activities of the Dr. Phillips Center, which has had a very successful opening and run since November. And Kathy's also going to update us on stage two events. So I'd like to introduce the President and the Dr. Phillips Center, Kathy Ramsburger.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. We've actually been open a little bit over two and a half months, and we wanted to give you an update not only on some of the specific details, international feedback, and just activity. Before I do that, I want to show you something, though, that years ago, we actually did a fly-through that was animated. It was built off the models and the plans that we had been envisioning for 10 years. And then what we've done is we've actually incorporated the actual end product, just so you can see what we promised is what was delivered. It actually seems like it was a little bit longer than three months ago, and there's been so much activity at the Arts Center. We've gotten fantastic reviews, both internationally and locally. Travel and Leisure, best places to travel and the coolest new tourist attractions in 2015. Fantastic for us, actually, and where we are compared to our other global cities. New York Times, 52 best places to go in 2015. The city's growing up thanks to a string of civic developments, including the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts. We know it's not just the Arts Center, it's all of the venues, it's all the activity, but it's nice to have had the recognition, especially in the New York Times. It's definitely gotten the attention of our peer performing arts centers worldwide. These people that are working in the Center are just as important as those that are actually coming to see the performances. This is actually Joyce Davidson, she's the stage manager of Book of Mormon. The acoustics here are fantastic. That's very, very important because that's a form of clientele for us, and the fact that we're being endorsed by the actual artists and the users of the facility is quite important. We actually set the record for the most tickets ever sold of any touring Book of Mormon on the second week when it was here, which was actually amazing. Chris Mann, Phantom of the Opera. This performing arts center in the Walt Disney Theater is one of the nicest theaters I've ever seen. He's actually called, he wants to come back and perform in the Pugh Theater. That's how much he actually loves the space. He also would like to come back and perform with the Orlando Philharmonic. Trip Advisor, this is important for us. These are just two quick comments, but there's several on there. Our city should be so proud. Great location, plenty of staff for valet, parking, ticket-taking tickets showing where you needed to go, bar staff, et cetera. Great venue, excellent sound quality, nice bathrooms, nice outdoor seating. This past Saturday night, we had several families that were international families. I had the chance to meet a family from Argentina. They live, you know, right in the heart of, actually, the cultural world, and they had the chance, I took them all through the facility, and they were just amazed. They're here through the end of February, and now they're coming back for most every performance. So we are a place for wonderful visitors, as well as the people that actually live here. Our grand opening, just to give you a recap of that, it was a three-week celebration. We had 12 free ticketed events. We had 13 performances. In that three-week period of time, we had about 25,000-plus guests actually visit. And we had 18 sponsors that we pulled together in about four and a half short months, and we included 500 local artists throughout the three-week period. Here's some of the artists that were here. We had everything from our local great Latin band, Rico Monaco was there, as well as we had minds and face painters, and of course, the Philharmonic, and the ballet and the Bach Festival as well. International brand exposure. Now, this is very important to us, and this is still occurring. A lot of this was just the sheer impact of the opening. We've not yet brought down a lot of the architectural magazines and reviews, but that is probably the next wave of media that we're going to be pulling forth, just in terms of the design and the architecture of the facility. Operations to date, record-setting numbers for Broadway subscribers. We have a 43% increase on new subscribers over last year. We have a 25 increase from 2013-2014 seasons, season subscription. We have our own series that we're presenting, it's our Jazz Roots Series. Our goal was right around 500 subscribers, and we came out with 739 subscribers, and that's four performances throughout the year. There's also education tied into that. We assume the operations of the Bob Carr Theater. We have had 76 performances and events in the past two months. So far, we've had 114,000 performance guests. 229,000 tickets have been sold for the 2014-15 fiscal year so far, and still selling. Shows and events, we've had 15,000 calls to the box office so far. 70 titles and artists currently are booked. Concession sales are tracking two times in front of projections. We have 30 special events to date. We have 109 special events currently booked, and we have 154 in process. What we realize is, you remember when we came and did the design, and many of you had the chance to travel with us to look at other cities and their art centers, and why they're successful, and what they wished that they could have done? And they've all been very open to say, "Gosh, we would have done this." They're very open because these buildings are here for 150 years. Placemaking was important. If you recall, we actually increased our scope to include the DeVos Family Room and other amenities, and this is a result of that. Over opening weekend, we had thousands of people walk in, maybe about 8,000 in two days. This was our open house. That Monday morning, we probably had 4,000 people call us saying, "I want to do an event here." A little exaggerating there, but the point is, is our event business is exploding, which is fantastic for getting people into the building and actually cross utilizing it the best we can. Diversity of programming. Joe Bonamassa was our first basic blues/rock performance. A whole new audience came in, different from that of the opening performances. Memberships are important. A brand-new organization. We already have 1,200 members to date. We're in 21 Florida counties. We have 16 out-of-state members, and we have three international members. 74% of our members have actually purchased a ticket. Philanthropy and sponsorship. To date, we have raised 129 million for the project. So far this fiscal year, which is July 1, we've raised 17 million, and that's pushing up a little bit higher right now as we speak. Arts education. We have had, again, talking about the mission, Performing Arts Center, what does that mean? It's really, how do we engage ourselves in the community, both in education but just outreach? We wrote a grant with PNC in partnership with the Orlando Science Center, and we were awarded that grant. We're also recognized as one of the best grants ever written for PNC in the country. NAPFOR charter and Washington Shores at the Hope Head Start Program. We're already making that impact. Before we open, we already have hired teachers that are working in these schools. We have 32 teen ambassadors that are from six counties and 20 schools, and we administer that program as well. They're also our street team, our great voices, not only within their school systems but in our community. We have 20 high schools and 1,400 students and educators part of the Applause Awards, and this is important. We have a team that is actually seeing every performance of these schools, and they come in, and it's almost like their Tony Awards. 25 spring semester classes, ages from 3 to 103, and they have been launched. And so that launched right after the first of the year. Our summer camp and workshop registration begins soon, and we've got some announcements coming up for that pretty quickly. And then we actually have an Arts for Every Life Scholarship Fund. UCF celebrates the arts. This is a festival partnership. This council has been briefed on that. This is part of the UCF gift. We actually altered their agreement of how they were going to use the facility, and we love this. It was a great concept that came from their program, where they're actually going to take over the facility for 10 solid days and really highlight and showcase a lot of the great art programs, both performing and visual arts at the university, and that's this April. Carmina Barana, what we did with the dress rehearsals is we brought in 350 guests that wouldn't be able to attend, and they ranged from ages four to 94. So we went over to some of the senior centers, and we invited them in, and we also brought a bunch of kids in and communities that really would never have the chance to see something like this, but they saw the dress rehearsal, they learned about the performance ahead of time. Our Jazz Roots Education Initiative. We have 150 students from West Orange High School actually participated, as well as Lake Nonna University High School. So when we do our Jazz Roots Series, what we do is we actually tie the program into students, and each performance actually focuses on a school. So the first one we did was with Ray Charles, Tribute to Ray Charles. So about 90-some kids from West Orange High School came in during the day, they participated in the sound check, they actually worked with the artist, they came in, there was a strong engagement. There was a curriculum that went ahead of time, the kids came in during the daytime, they worked with the sound check, they participated, then we actually gave them dinner, and they came back and saw the performance. Long day for them, but they really had the one-on-one relationship with the actual performers when they were there. The series will happen again next year, so it'll grow and continue to grow. Two more left. This next one, oh, it drew on my mind also, we put 43 singers together from 12 local churches, and it was gospel support for Ray Charles. It was fantastic. For the first time, that's been done. LaMond Bracy actually led that effort, was fantastic. Sensory Friendly Social Story, this was fantastic. It was a partnership with Access Charter School and OCA to aid children with autism. What we did is we actually developed and produced a film, and in the film, five kids that actually have autism were actually the stars of the film. And what they did is they wanted to really have something to send to their community and their parents to say, "When you come to an arts center, it's very stimulating, and so how do you handle that with autism?" And it's a remarkable piece, I'd love to send it over to you so you could see it. But we produced it and actually was sent to all the families that actually came to this performance. It was done last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, actually. So it was Kevin Spencer, he's an illusionist. And so we had one program at 1:00 for the general audience, and at 3:00 it was for sensory friendly, and so it was fantastic. Collaborative efforts. Spread the Dream, we just did a partnership with OCPS, African-American Council of Christian Clergy and Famew. And then, again, I think we have about 2,300 kids that actually came to that. We participated in Martin Luther King Parade. We're actually supporting an effort with Senator Geraldine Thompson, A Voice, A Vote, and that's going to be at the Arts Center here just next month. And we're doing a documentary also that we're going to release in early 2015 that's focusing and highlighting 100 artists and arts leaders in the community. Economic activity. Hotel and restaurant partners are seeing a significant increase in reservations and dining activity. They're calling us, saying, "Thank you." I don't even notice, but a lot of restaurants are now open on Sunday, which is also great for the Arts Center and great for the downtown businesses. Citrus Club has retained an additional 73 new members from a partnership that we developed with their membership program and our membership program. Increased interest on the bidding process for Hotel Parcel Number Three. And so that just has wrapped up in terms of advertising, and we're in the process now of putting the structure together and working very closely with your team to develop and select a hotel partner. Phase Two. You're familiar with this, and we've had wonderful support and partnerships with your team, just in terms of making sure that about eight months ago, maybe a year ago, we wanted to bring the drawings up to code. So we finalized the drawings in the spring of 2014. We also conducted pre-construction estimates by Balfour BD Construction with multiple subcontractors in each discipline. So the very first time, we were looking at the cost for Stage Two, this had not been done yet, because there had to be a capital investment to get this done. So we did an early assessment, we used PCL, which is the owner's rep for the Arts Center, to do the best assessment they could without having the drawings finalized to see where we would be. And then when we were really looking for the additional funding from the county, we decided, once that happened, we would go ahead and invest and bring the drawings up to code and make the new assessments on details and take what we've learned from Stage One to Stage Two. Since that's happened, this was a more detailed estimate done by Balfour BD, and it included estimate costs of also, this next is how we finance our pledges. So that's the difference from the first time we came and said what the cost for Stage Two is going to be versus today. So financing pledges is something that we've done with Stage One. And the reason why that is needed is because gifts come in over 10 years, they come in over five years, they come in over three years, and they're binding pledges, but we just have to monetize those resources so we can have access to them when we need them in terms of construction. So we're not financing a gap, we're financing the pledges. Variables of Phase One costs. So we're applying our knowledge, like I mentioned. We evaluate and we determine the construction management process. We're still working on what that is, so that's a variable still. And again, we're also looking at financing alternatives for not only the philanthropy, but also just in terms of a consortium of collaborations with banks. So Phase Two costs, and this is a little bit small. Dr. Phillips, available funds right now for Stage Two is 26 million. Orange County Tourist Development Tax is 74. The additional tourism tax is the 25, as you can see. City of Winter Park actually out of their general funds approved a $1 million gift, which was fantastic. Interest earnings is 3 million, and then additional philanthropy needed is 55 million, which the project total cost in terms of sources is 184, which balances to the uses below. So you can see the architectural injury, and the construction-related cost is 143. That's the number that was impacted when we did the assessment with detailed drawings and multiple subcontractors. At the very bottom, you can see construction financing of philanthropy, 10 million. That's a variable. It could go anywhere between 3 and 10 million, so we're putting worst-case scenario on there. Projected Phase Two activity. Complete the capital campaign in 2016. And I know many of you have a relationship with Jim Pugh and Chuck's Diamonds and our board, they would like to finish the capital campaign as soon as possible. And so this is giving us a little bit, it's giving us time, which is a good thing, but on the other hand, we want to finish it as soon as possible so we can get moving on the project and keep the escalation down. So once we've got that done, actually before that, we can begin the construction bidding process. And again, there's going to have to be some infusion of some capital dollars to get that going. Final drawings, again, brushing those off, making sure that they're up to speed. Also, we've learned a lot in Phase One, just in terms of operations, and we want to apply some of that to Stage Two. So we were going to, I don't know if you've ever built a house, but once you've built it, you've walked in, you say, "God, I wish I could do this again." Well, we have the chance to do it again, so we're learning some things from Stage One to put in Stage Two. Contract approvals will be in the fourth quarter of 2016. Commencement of Phase Two construction, the beginning of first quarter of 2017, and the grand opening would be in the fourth quarter of 2019. So we actually went to the county, we had a request to extend Phase Two timeline, and they actually voted, it was unanimous vote over at Orange County to approve that. And what it does, it gave us the time, is giving us the time to complete the capital campaign and gain more exposure to new donors. And we've seen a great increase in new donors. Like I mentioned, 17 million dollars since July 1st is great and still continues. We also want to maximize the knowledge that we learned during the construction. So we have learned a great deal of how to build this building. It's a very complicated building, as you can see, and we want to maximize the knowledge learned during our current operations. And so this is two-thirds of the Arts Center. You can see, we're really excited about finishing that next third on the left-hand side there. So I'd love to answer any questions.
Kathy, could you go back to the slide that has Phase Two costs?
Sure.
I just want to point out, we have an action this afternoon on the inter-local agreement, and it relates to the extension of time, but it is solely related to the additional TDT that was outside the original inter-local agreement between the city and the county, that the county is putting in an additional 25 million. But I also want to point out that it shows no funding from the City of Orlando or the State of Florida for Phase Two, and that's because of the total package, all of our money and all of the state money went into Phase One. So we're all in on the money that we committed and the land that we committed to the program. The TDT was equivalent, the original TDT was equivalent to what our CRA commitment was, so we have not drawn down the TDT in the fashion that we were able to on the CRA, because CRA was available for Phase One. We, I think, originally committed 40 million of the 130 million of the county's TDT, and then hooked in for some of the Phase Two money to do the DeVos Room and the, what were the other two things?
Back House.
The back of the house.
Donor Room.
And donor room. So that leaves 74 million of the county's original commitment, plus the 25 million, and we're simply voting to allow the county to spend that 25 million on Phase Two this afternoon.
I believe it was 130 was the original commitment, and then when the soccer stadium, or no, when we revisited the Arrow Local for the stadium, they agreed to some escalation, and I think there was an estimate of about 8 million at the time for escalation, so that brought them to 138. I think, Mayor, I will send over to you, with Rebecca's support, of course, the total cost and sources and uses for Stage One, and then you can also compare it to Stage Two, so you have a holistic perspective of the entire cost of the project, including the land.
And then there were some other things done in Phase One that benefit Phase Two. For instance, they bought all of the travertine, so that the travertine in Phase Two would match the travertine that was put into Phase One, but that ended up being a Phase One cost, even though it'll be a material that's used in Phase Two. So when you're building a building in phases, there's some trade-offs between the phases and some of the costs that are actually benefiting the second phase or captured in the first phase, and then vice versa.
Right. All the land costs for the entire project is in Phase One.
Phase One, correct.
Right. All the designing and construction costs for the entire building, pretty much, are in Phase One. And so when we talk about phases, to your point, Mayor, it's not just the structure, it's bigger than that, so.
Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, and thank you, Kathy, and it has been wonderful. Everybody I've talked to just thinks it's just the neatest thing in the whole world. And as expected, we would all, we'd look at the numbers a little bit differently. So tell me a little bit about where we are in the 55 million commitment that we're extending to be able to raise the balance of the private money.
Right.
So kind of where are we?
It's responsible to philanthropy to raise the 55 million. And so we've got a team in place to do it. It's, you know, we're looking at several different sources to do that. We're looking at potential state funding. We are looking at, we have additional gifts that are verbal that we're hopefully ready to close.
How far are you now, and how far do you have to go?
We have 55 million dollars to raise.
I know, but so that's all new money?
All new money.
Okay.
There's a variable on the 55 million. Like I mentioned, the financing costs of the pledges are how we finance the pledges. Right now, we have and we're holding 10 million. That could swing anywhere from 3 to 10. No higher than 10, but 3 to 10.
The, when you go back and look at that, I'm trying to remember what the contract says, but I think you have to have those commitments prior to construction or prior to permitting or something of that.
Prior to, actually, we have to have, prior to breaking ground, commencement of construction, we have to have all of the philanthropy committed, and we have to have it financed, okay? And that's why we're talking, we talk about financing the pledges. The pledges have to exceed the cost of construction, it has to include the financing of the pledges. And that's that variable. And we're in the process of working with a consortium to really minimize the cost. We performed very well on financing the pledges for Stage One, and it's been a very good, it's been a very good relationship with our bank, and therefore, other banks, and so we have some opportunity there. So we're in the process of doing that.
And Commissioner, we have always taken the position from our side that we would not begin a phase unless we had 100% certainty
Right.
that the entire amount of the funds would be available for the construction. So for instance, on Phase One, although we anticipated that the TDT would come back and fund 41 million of it, we weren't guaranteed that. So Jim Pugh and Chuck, Chuck and a few others
Dr. Phillips.
provided a letter of credit that helped us guarantee that all the funds would be available.
Excuse me, Mayor and Commissioners, if I could add to that. This 25 million dollars additional TDT from Orange County requires that the project be bid, so we have a hard cost, to the extent possible, that you have in the beginning of these projects, and then secondly, that the entire contingency is funded as well. Everything's funded in cash. All that has to be there by this particular date that you're voting on today for that 25 million to be able to come into the project.
I just, I thought we'd made more progress. So you're at 55 million is our goal now, and we've got...
We actually have made great progress. We've raised, like I mentioned, 17 million dollars since July. We're making progress raising money. The cost of the project is changing, okay? Just because it's changing. When you cut a building in half after it's designed, and you have to hold the team together for a year to get that done, and then there's a lot of, the project costs have gone up. And like we mentioned in the very beginning of the presentation, is the first estimate that we had was based on an estimate by PCL without drawings that were complete, or they were complete drawings, they just weren't to code. Codes had changed, and so, just again, the timing, since the building, since the TDT was delayed, we were so far into the project, the project was 100% designed, we're entering construction documents. We were two and a half, two years into the project in terms of investment of getting the design done. Complicated project, takes three years to design, as opposed to a typical building, the other venues including, but any building takes less than about a year to design. Ours takes about three years to design. So when you're two years into the project and you have to cut it in half, if you can imagine, all of the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing, security, all systems were designed in one building. When we had to cut the building in half, the entire building had to be consolidated into one building, and massive systems. And so that was a huge impact to the cost of the project. Then along with the delay, another year to delay to get those drawings shored up, and then we had a delay right before we broke ground for construction, and that was about maybe an eight-month delay. So now, just because of time, escalation's occurring, and so that's the impact, and that's why our board wants to raise the money as soon as possible, because we're responsible for raising the funds.
And I guess, I'm going back to, something tells me 25 million was that original amount in philanthropy, so that's now expanded from 25 to...
Actually, it was a little bit, it was 38 million, actually.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
38, mhm.
So that's expanded from 38 to 55. And according to the 17 million, you've gotten 17 million of the 55 in?
No, we've raised 17 million since July, and it's at 55.
Of the 55, that's our point.
Correct.
So that's the balance of the 55.
Is 55, right. Now, there's a variable in there, there's two, there's several variables in there. Again, we're going on the high side.
Right.
Financing the pledges, our philanthropy is a variable. Understanding the cost of how we're going to manage construction, that's a huge variable. And then also, we have to, you know, we really have to get into the drawings one more time just to make sure that they're up to date and taking the same information that we had from Stage One. We believe, and this is just my assessment, not on the O triple C, but the constructibility of this project, there's a benefit because we've done it once to see if we can save some better approaches to how it's built, and that might help us with cost. We've not assessed any of that. So we have to get into this. So we're giving our best shot now of what it's going to be. It may change. Hopefully, we know, we're hopeful that in some numbers, they might go down, but again, the sooner that we can get the project started, the better it is for the cost of construction.
Let me ask you briefly about the operational costs. And I know we've had a lot of response and done very well with that. Where are we operationally? I would assume we're in positive because of what's happened so far. But I mean, the thing we've said for years was that, the scary part is you build a great building, you can, you know, building, brick and mortar is relatively easy compared to trying to sustain the operation for year to year. So how is that going from a standpoint of...
Well, I mean, we had a great article this past weekend from the Orlando Sentinel on Matt Palm. You can see that selling tickets is probably one of the best things you can do in terms of earned income. Also, the events that we have, we're way in front of the event activity. So we're actually looking at that business model of how do you expand it, and how do you support it? You know, we're learning the audiences here, so just... You know, we're learning the audiences here, so just like any startup, we've actually capitalized the first several years of operations to make sure that we can stabilize. That's been in our plan since we made a presentation to this commission back in 2004, I believe it, it is. And so we are capitalized from an operations perspective for the first several years until we balance and really get to know our audiences. So we feel good about operations at this point.
I guess...
Again, we've only been open, you know, literally a little over two months. And so, again, just learning and, and seeing the response is something that is going to be obviously incorporated in our annual budget.
I guess the concern I have is as you, as you, and I haven't seen the numbers, and we'll see them after you get kind of through the, you know, a long enough operational time to do it. The concern always has been that when you, you're also gearing up staff, you're gearing up operations, you're gearing up all the same stuff, and, and there's a difference between increasing tickets and, and I guess sustainability.
Yeah.
And so that's the, the challenge, and that's, you know, and part of the reason for the, for the escrow, to be able to cover that, because we know that there's going to be some startup costs, we know there's going to be some things that get us to sustainability level.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm thrilled about the responses, and everybody who's been there, and, and I've been there, it's been just really kind of, really kind of cool, so. But I think it really does create, I think I saw something recently by Sanford Burnham, what really does create a different kind of image of Orlando than, than just a sports team, or, I mean, it's just, it's a broader, well-rounded image. So anyway, thank you for everything that you have done, and thank you for how you've kept us abreast of what's going on.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you. I apologize, I've lost my voice. But along the same lines as Commissioner Stewart, what my question was, and I think, Kathy, you started to address it, do we have any operating performance thresholds or
Revitalization of Paramore has been a priority for this council and this administration.
criteria or goals before we go to Phase Two, or is it your thought, once we raise the
In 2003, we commissioned a task force, along with a downtown task force, to develop strategies
money, we're ready to go?
Once we raise the money, we're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
related to Paramore, and out of that was born the Pathways for Paramore Plan, which
Anybody else?
Okay. Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
was instituted in 2005, which we have followed methodically, block-by-block basis, it had
You know what, let me make one other point. The 55 million is inclusive of closeout of Phase One, correct?
a number of tenants, but that's been almost nine years in the making, and we've had great
It's all, all, all costs to complete the building.
Right.
Right.
successes, but we don't want to rest on our successes, so we thought it was time, along
All costs included.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you, Deepak's team. with Project DTO, to also update the Paramore Plan. I've been to, I don't know, five or six events, I think, and I just get nothing but positive So Paul Lewis, who was in charge of that effort, is here to give a presentation on feedback from everybody that I hear, and sometimes I'm at the gym and I overhear people that. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
talking about having just gone to see something and they don't know that I can hear them,
Great to see you all this morning. I want to start off by showing you the, the cover of the, of the Paramore Plan that you
and I haven't heard a negative comment yet in, in any regard, and even some of the things,
have.
so many of the things we do, people are wondering about this, wondering about that, but I've
One of our, our consultant team is VHB and a cast of several other companies, but our
heard nothing but positive experiences about parking even, so good job on that.
lead project manager from the VHB team, Jim Sullen, really wanted to make sure that
If you guys want to leave, you can do that.
we improved the cover a little bit. There was a lot of, a lot of open space in it, and I just wanted to show you what the actual final cover will look like. And the reason why we have added these pictures is because we want to emphasize the fact that we, that we have a very important history in this neighborhood, and we need to reflect the fact that we're moving from that historical background through community engagement into the future. So, I wanted to read this quote before I get fully started into this thing. This is a, a quote from Melinda Gates, from the Gates Foundation. "Our desire to bring every good thing to our children is a force for good throughout the world. It's what propels societies forward." And Dr. Sue Desmond Hellman, who is the executive director, chief executive officer for the Gates Foundation, said, "These are the three things you need for every child: a stable place to call home, good schools with highly qualified teachers, and strong communities that foster a sense of community." So that's kind of our starting point for the Paramore Plan. Just a little bit of background of why, how this came to be. It is part of a much larger planning effort called, from the US HUD Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant, which is being led by the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And that particular planning effort is centered along the Phase One Sun Rail stations. The purpose of that plan is for all the different stations to look at their area planning around each station. For us, we wanted to develop a, a vision for our neighborhoods around the Central Station and the Church Street Station, and so we focused on the Paramore area. The Paramore Plan, as the Mayor mentioned, is also an integral component of the Project DTO initiative, and again, we see this as a very, very important continuation and further refinement of the Pathways for Paramore Initiative. So Paramore to date, the boundaries of the Paramore Neighborhood that we studied, basically our Colonial Drive to the north, Gore to the south, I-4 to the east, and Orange Blossom Trail to the west. From a land perspective, there's about 819 acres, 35% of that land is in public ownership, 13% is vacant, and about 24% is residential, basically evenly divided between single-family, multifamily, and 10% commercial. In terms of socio-economic conditions, the population of the area is approximately 6,200, 6,125 right now. Now, that is a, quite a decline from the historical high of the neighborhood back, if you were to go back to actually 1960, the population of the area was about 18,000. So we've had quite a substantial population drop in that area over the last 50 years. The number of housing units out there was approximately 2,700. The household occupancy is really important for everybody to understand. There's approximately 73% renter occupied, about 8% owner occupied, very low number in terms of owner occupied units, and about 18, or, sorry, 19% vacant. The median household income in the Paramore Neighborhood is approximately 15,400, as compared to the city's median household income of approximately 42,000. So that's about 36% of the citywide median household income. I think the most striking number on here, on this particular slide, is the unemployment rate of approximately 24%. To give you perspective, 24% is approximately what the country went through during the Great Depression, okay? So one of the other things that we looked at was the Paramore Kids' Own Household Survey that was done in 2012. These numbers are taken from a household survey of about 101 families, and the key things here that I want you to look at are, it says 86% of people, of families run out of money in a month, 32% of children have lost a loved one in the past year either through death or through incarceration, and 41% of Paramore children have chronic health problems such as diabetes, or some type of lung issues, that kind of thing. So Paramore, as we know, is changing dramatically. We have a lot of things going on. We've got the Sun Rail, Lumbo Extension. We've got committed projects such as the Major League Soccer Stadium, Magic Sports Entertainment District, and Creative Village, the new K-8 Community School, which we had the groundbreaking for just this past weekend, and the I-4 Ultimate Project will also have an impact on the neighborhood. And of course, the, the announcement of the UCF and Valencia College Downtown Campus are all on the way and will impact the neighborhood. So we have a changing relationship, the, the area is, is changing in relationship towards the, the Central Business District. So the challenge is, how do we balance the heritage of the neighborhood with the coming economic development? So these were the key questions that we wanted to answer as part of this, of the Paramore Conference of Neighborhood Plan. How do we transform Paramore into a 21st century community that has all the physical, economic, and social components that made the community work back in the 1950s? How do we transform Paramore in a way that provides housing and job opportunities for the residents that now reside in Paramore, as well as those who grew up there, who left, and then want to return? And how do we accommodate the future demand for market rate and affordable housing for the thousands of employees who want to live and work in downtown Orlando in a place that celebrates diversity and creativity? How do we transform Paramore into one of the healthiest neighborhoods in the city of Orlando? How do we utilize true urbanism techniques where we can shape the built environment in a way that increases civic engagement? And most importantly, probably, and least in my mind, how do we transform Paramore into a place that's safe for children and for families? So the underlying principles that are, that are part of this plan are derived from Dr. Richard Jackson, Jackson's work on healthy community design. Dr. Jackson is a professor at UCLA, and he is written, he's actually literally written the textbook on healthy community design. It is really, his book talks about how you marry health and, and planning in the built form. And his concepts really focus on making it easy for people to live healthy lifestyles, to decrease dependence on the personal automobile, and to provide opportunities for, for people to be physically active and socially engaged. So these are the 10 principles that we utilized as part of the plan, and I'm going to read them real quickly. Number one, drive economic development by creating unique identity. The text is a little bit small. Improve access to job opportunities, promote social environmental justice, increase housing opportunities, make education the cornerstone of revitalization, empower champions for healthy community, promote access to healthy food, invest in people, not cars, maximize the opportunity for all residents to get physical activity, and encourage mixed-use development. We'll get into a little bit more detail on each of those 10 principles in a moment. I did want to talk about a little bit the, the community engagement process that we went through. I believe it was a very healthy exchange of ideas. We had 10 small group meetings, and that included action teams with each of the three neighborhoods within the Paramore community. We had a social services action team, we had a faith community action team, we met with the youth of the neighborhood, and, and also, we had meetings with the West Church Street property owners, and we also did walking audits. We also had five large-scale community workshops that, where we established the issues for the area, the concerns, and the strategies. During that process, we actually identified three different vision alternatives for how the land use pattern would look in the neighborhood in the future. Through that process, we actually did Turning Point Exercise and voted on particular scenarios, and, and also looked at different catalytic sites, at, at small area planning as well. And essentially, what we came up with was, these are kind of the big land use ideas. We want to really focus on neighborhood preservation and enhancement. We need to focus on residential infill to protect the Arlington Heights, Lake Dot area, enhance that area, and particularly, in the Callahan area, particularly around the downtown K-8 school. We also want to enhance the residential on further south in the Holden-Paramore neighborhood. We want, we, we saw a very, kind of an eye-opening event, and one of the meetings was, a lot of times, we'd kind of look at Paramore in by itself, and we really decided from a, from a market perspective, and the market study kind of showed this as well, that was part of the plan, we need to also focus on the economic opportunities along Orange Blossom Trail. And the reason for that is that historically, a lot of the folks that were living in Paramore moved to the west. So a lot of people still think of themselves as being Paramore residents, but they actually may live further to the west. There's a lot of interaction, particularly on Church Day, people are coming back and forth, and so we just need to make sure that, that we connect the two areas, east and west. The other thing, the other reason why OBT is so important is that during the five to seven years that the I-4 Ultimate Project will be going on, OBT becomes an even more important transportation corridor. The, one of the focus areas is the West Church Street and OBT Gateway Node. We think that's an area where you would want to see some increased intensity and density. Another important concept here is the Historical and Cultural Heritage District, which is down along Church Street and Terry, that area and Paramore, of course. And then we think that's, and this kind of lines up with, with some of the things that Project DTO talked about. We really want to make that the heart of the community in terms of events, and we also think that that's the area where you're going to want to, to enhance the Main Street or Main Street Concepts into that area. Of course, Creative Village and Educational District is, is an important part of the plan, as well as the, the sports and entertainment area of the plan, that kind of runs along the Church Street and Central area. One of the big ideas that came out of here was the Paramore Square Concept, which is the site directly to the east of the Major League Soccer Stadium. The plan really calls for that area to be considered, or to be a potential open space for community events. So let me just kind of go through these 10 big ideas. These are the creating healthy community, drive economic development by creating unique identity is the, is the principle. The text that you see below that are kind of the strategies, and then there are individual action items that flow, that flow in the, in the actual text of the document. So I think the most important one for us to think about here is, the Main Street Program has been incredibly successful in, in a number of other neighborhoods throughout the, throughout the city, and we think that those concepts should be utilized as much as possible in the, in the Paramore area, particularly along Paramore Avenue. We also, lining up with Project DTO, want to identify, brand, and promote Paramore as a place where we can celebrate and experience African-American history and culture. We also think it's important for us to step up our communication and our collaboration with the Orange Blossom Trail Community Redevelopment Agency as well, to, to see if we can seek to, to move forward with some opportunities for private sector investment along the OBT corridor. That little change in picture there just is an idea of, of the kind of redevelopment you may see along Paramore. One thing that we, that we did when, as part of this plan, is we did a, a market study and, for the, for the entire area. And one of the things we found was that because we have such a relatively low population, that the amount of retail that you could possibly get in the Paramore area is relatively low. And the only way to really change that is to get more people into Paramore. And one of the ways we, you may want to do that is, is to, is to fill in the gaps along some of our local areas with, with some mid, or some low-rise residential townhomes, that type of thing. And so that picture kind of shows how that could work. We want to improve access to job opportunities. We want to establish a small business incubator, partner with OCPS and UCF and Valencia to fund new vocational opportunities for Paramore residents. Promote social environmental justice. We did have lengthy discussions in our community meetings about surveillance cameras, and we think that they are a useful tool in, in certain circumstances, and obviously within funding constraints. We did talk a lot about community-oriented policing, including the OPT Bike Patrol. There, there was a lot of community support for those concepts. Obviously, as we move forward, we need to implement brownfield assessment and cleanup programs, and we want to support the Project DTO recommendations addressing scattered-site housing approach, or program for the chronically homeless. Finally, the, the one I want to mention... may see along Paramore. One thing that we did when, as part of this plan, is we did a market study for the entire area. And one of the things we found was that because we have such a relatively low population, that the amount of retail that you could possibly get in the Paramore area is relatively low. And the only way to really change that is to get more people into Paramore. And one of the ways you may want to do that is to fill in the gaps along some of our local areas with some mid, some low-rise residential townhomes, that type of thing. And so, that picture kind of shows how that could work. We want to improve access to job opportunities. We want to establish a small business incubator, partner with OCPS and UCF and Valencia to fund new vocational opportunities for Paramore residents. Promote social environmental justice. We did have lengthy discussions in our community meetings about surveillance cameras, and we think that they are a useful tool in certain circumstances and obviously within funding constraints. We did talk a lot about community-oriented policing, including the OPT Bike Patrol. There was a lot of community support for those concepts. Obviously, as we move forward, we need to implement brownfield assessment and cleanup programs, and we want to support the Project DTO recommendations addressing scattered-site housing approach, a program for the chronically homeless. Finally, the one I want to mention there is that we need to conduct a community health needs assessment, probably in the next year or two, to assess the health and wellness status of residents and address attitudes towards health, healthy eating and physical activity. Really, we want to tackle the issues that are related to chronic disease. Increase housing opportunities. This is incredibly important in this neighborhood. As I said, we have a very low population. The only way to really stabilize the neighborhood is to get more housing units into the area, and that needs to be a range of housing. You need to be able to provide for affordable housing in the neighborhood, and you also need to be able to provide for market rate and mixed-income housing. We think that one of the ways that we want to do that is to pursue vigorously Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grants and other grants that would enable us to work on those type of projects. We also need to step up our game a little bit in terms of working through, working with our community partners on developing single-family as well as multifamily development, residential development in the neighborhood. Number five, which is make education the cornerstone of revitalization. Obviously, supporting the downtown community school is incredibly important. And of course, we had our groundbreaking this past weekend, which is very, very exciting for all of, for everybody that's kind of had that dream over the last few years. And of course, a community school is different than your typical elementary school. It really becomes a focal point for a neighborhood. It allows for activities to occur outside of normal school hours, and I think, I think we're headed in the right direction on this particular project. We also need to continue our support of important projects like PKZ and their cradle-to-career pipeline. Empowering champions for a healthy community. We need to probably work on, you know, our neighborhood associations in the area. It's hard when you only have an eight or nine percent property owner numbers, but hopefully as those numbers rise, the neighborhood associations will become more active. And we want to, we want to actually have this plan be reviewed and looked at over time by the ambassadors and by the community residents as we go forward. Promoting access to healthy food. I think we're already doing some of these things, but we need to partner more with local organizations such as Hevny to expand nutrition and education, and we need to develop a strategy to attract a neighborhood-serving grocery store. That was one of the needs that really popped out during the community meetings. We think that because of, as under the market study that came out, we think that the most likely place that you would see that type of facility would be along OBT. That was, that's because the market of the larger geographic area would be able to support it better. We want to connect the neighborhoods with good walking bike network, and one of the ideas that came out was perhaps doing a pilot project for a cycle track along Westmoreland that would connect the north and the south for all the residents, the kids that will get us up to the community school. We want to maximize the opportunity for all residents to get physical activity, and again, we want to encourage residents to use the new K-8 Community Schools recreational facilities. And encouraging mixed-use development. Obviously, there's going to be mixed-use development on the eastern side. We also want to do appropriate redevelopment throughout the community, but I think the place where you would focus, the higher-density type of redevelopment would be along the OBT and Church Street area. I think some of the other areas where you're going to be redevelopment would be more small-scale, and that's in those residential areas. So, what you have before you is the plan document. The executive summary is about 20 pages long, and it has those principles we've just went through, the strategies and the action items, or action, and those actions are broken up into short-term, midterm and long-term actions. You will be seeing a growth management plan amendment coming forward that will kind of lay the groundwork for this, for this plan and for future amendments to our downtown community redevelopment area plan, as well as our land development code and potential plan development ordinances that would implement the plan. I think one of the things that we want to jump right in is trying to form the partnerships that are going to be necessary to seek HUD Choice Neighborhood Grants and other non-governmental and federal and state grants. So, we think that some of those partnerships will include entities like UCF or perhaps the area hospitals. So, we'll be working on that as we move forward. So, our recommendation to you today is to accept the Paramore Conference of Neighborhood Plan as the community's plan for this neighborhood and to direct staff to work with our community partners to implement the plan. And I just want to end with this closing thought. We need to revitalize Paramore in a way worthy of a child's affection, and this is really key. If people, if children grow up thinking that their physical environment is a reflection of themselves, if it's ugly and brutal, that can have a deadening effect. We have the responsibility to create an environment which they can feel at home and find their special places. It should be possible for kids to get to know their community inside and out, and they are, after all, the ones who will inherit the Paramore community and become responsible for its future. So, that's the end of my presentation. I wanted to bring up Jim Sellen to say a few words. Jim is, again, our project manager from the VHB team, and if I missed something, he will certainly correct me. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Jim Sellen with VHB, 225 East Livingston, Orlando, Florida. Paul said very few words, and it's going to be very few words, but the bottom line is, we just want to thank the city for the opportunity and the honor, frankly, to work on this plan. And just as important, we want to thank the people and the people who have businesses in Paramore. When you come into a process like this, you come in with a lot of perceptions, a lot of misconceptions. The first, Kurt was saying, it was a year and one day today that we started this process. So, it's taken a year. And during that year, I think in the first, at least four months, the people of Paramore educated us. We probably should have been paying them. And they educated us in a way that helped us understand the history of the community. I sat with Senator Thompson several times, read her book, read several books about Paramore. We had a thing we did where about every week, we went to lunch with someone, someone from the community, someone who had a business in the community, a resident of the community. This area has got such good bones, it's amazing. You've heard of a walk score for a community? The walk score in Paramore is over 75. The walk score in Baldwin Park, where I live, is just over 50. So, there, you hear things about Paramore, and the perception is it's a poor area, that people are all in transition, that there's no programs. Yes, it is an area where they're challenged economically. I will tell you that there's no question that's going to change. If you look, and I know, Mayor, you're deeply involved in this, at the potential that it's going to bring with UCF and Valencia and the vocational programs. We sat with, PKZ took us on a tour of Paramore along with the members of Valencia and the administration there of UCF, and sat with 10 children from Jones. They're all seniors. And they asked them, where do you want to go to college? What do you want to do? So on and so forth. In that 45 minutes, it was the most compelling example I can imagine of the impact UCF's going to have on the future of that community and the potential of bringing to that community enormous opportunities, not only for those children, but job opportunities and so forth. To stand here after what you've heard about Paramore and some of the numbers and say, this is probably Orlando's next great neighborhood, I believe it. I absolutely believe it. We also want to thank the staff. Your staff thinks a lot about Paramore, and they treat it as a special place in terms of helping us. We got enormous help in terms of the information we got from the staff. Especially, we want to thank Lisa Early and her group at PKZ. They do a great job. We got an education from Brenda at the very beginning about what we should and shouldn't do in Paramore. I want to leave you with this thought. We had a meeting, and Commissioner Hill, you may remember this because I think you might have been there, it was at the Jackson Center, and typical planning thing, we're going to give our PowerPoint. And about five minutes into it, it didn't happen because people wanted to be heard. So, we just took the microphone, and we went around, and there was just complaint after complaint, more about, you know, can we trust you guys to do a plan and care about our community and what it stands for and its culture and its heritage? And what made it at the end, what made it work for us, had nothing to do with our expertise or how good we are as planners, although we think we're pretty good. It had to do with about four students from PKZ. And they got up at the very end, and they looked at the people in that community, and they said, we're disappointed in you all. We came here to hear about our future, and all we've heard is you complain about the past, and this is about the future. And it turned everything, turned everything in the room, turned everything that we did. The whole trust potential in what we were doing went up. Every meeting we had after that was better. So, we thanked those three or four young people. So, like Paul said, that's about what the future is, is the future for those young people. So, again, thank you, City of Orlando, for allowing us to work on this.
Jim, Paul, I want to thank all of you for the effort, Commissioner Hill, over the last year, and it reemphasizes what we do here at the city, which is, we don't allow development in a haphazard manner. We plan and put a lot of thought and effort into every area in our city, whether it's Southeast Sector Plan out in, on the Lake Nona side, or the Edgewater Drive overlay, or what Commissioner Ortiz is doing in the 436 corridor. It's important that we have a roadmap and a vision for where we want to go so that we don't veer off course. And in every case, we try to involve the community to help shape that plan so that we have buy-in on where, what direction we're headed. I'll let you, Commissioner Hill, if you have any thoughts, close us here.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank Mr. Sellen, his group, and also Paul, and the community. This is a community plan. They were quite, quite involved in the Paramore community, understanding the culture of Paramore, giving us a voice, giving the youth a voice, giving the seniors a voice, and I know our future, and one thing I want to agree, disagree with Mr. Sellen's is, is the fact that this is one of the next best communities in the city. This is one of the best communities here in the city. Just now, we're getting ready to give it a little more TLC. That was a joke, but I, thank you. And with this K through eight, well, now PS through eight in the UCF, in the Valencia component, this educational hub that's going to be right there in Paramore, that is the turnaround for changes in the youth and even their mothers' and fathers' lives with that educational component there. And I know that the future of Paramore is great. The housing component, I know we're working really hard down here to make sure that we give adequate housing there in the Paramore community because that's going to be something that is needed. My only hope while we're moving forward is this, while we're developing mixed-income housing, while we're developing affordable housing, that we make sure that we develop workforce housing, because I do want to see a diversified community, but I want to make sure that those young kids that are there now in Paramore can get those scholarships, that can become the doctors that UCF has promised, and get those preschool through eight opportunities. So, we got to make sure that we keep our residents there, make sure we bring in those that have left. I see often where professionals say, we really want to come back to Paramore, but, you know, the housing is inadequate. So, we're on to something. I just want to make sure that we keep the folk that dare to have those scholarship opportunities.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, great presentation. I got a few questions. That market study, was that done by the city or was that done by VHB?
No, that was done by the VHB team.
Did we pay for that?
No, the federal government paid for that. It was, it was part, it was part of the request for proposal.
Explain the grant that we got.
I'm sorry. It was, it was a $492,000 grant from the US HUD, Housing and Urban Development. And one of the things that we, when we wrote the RFP for that particular project, we knew that we needed to have a market study component of the project to make it realistic, and that is actually one of the appendices of the plan, and the entire market study is there for people to look at. Essentially, I kind of talked really, really briefly about what that market study showed. It really did an overview of the entire neighborhood, and that's why I kind of talked a little bit about the lack of a market for a great deal of retail. But what it also did is it allowed us to take a look at three different catalytic sites in the neighborhood. One of them is the Orange Blossom Trail Church Street intersection. One of them was the area just south and east of the, or south, I'm sorry, south and west of the Amway Center. The city owns quite a bit of property right there at Terry, I'm sorry, Division and Central. Yeah. So, we looked at that, and we also looked at a potential mixed-income residential project near the Major League Soccer Stadium site. And the, so, we have that information. Now, the market study, what it shows is that each of those three particular sites in the development program that we assumed for those areas, what it basically showed to us is that it's very hard to make a mixed-income, mixed-use project work. You need to have some, you need to, you need to have some pretty, you need to play with, you need to tinker with your, with your program to make it work, to make something penciled out. But it also shows that, you know, each of those project areas might need a little bit of help to make a mixed-use project work in those locations. So, there was very detailed, and if you wanted to read through that, and if you had any questions for me, I would be glad to sit down and go through.
So, VHB has been paid for that grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how much personnel, or how many people do we have working from the city on this particular project?
From the city? Well, I did put it on the, in the page, or in the, in the document. I was the main project manager for it. We had Felby Andella Esprilla from our city planning entity. We also had representatives from basically every line department. So, we had folks from transportation engineering, transportation planning. We had folks from housing. So, we had a wide range of people. Probably, I would say, there were probably about 25, 30 city staff people that worked on it in one way or another over the past year.
So, in terms of time, what are we looking at in terms of implementation of all reservation plan?
In terms of staff time?
No, in terms of the whole plan, revitalization plan. What's the time span here?
It's approximately, it's broken down into, kind of like into five-year increments. So, we've got action plan items that go from zero to five years, six to 10, and then 10 plus. So, I would say it's a midterm plan, so it's more like a 15 to 20-year horizon for everything that's in here.
All right. I'd love to see something similar in the southeast. We've been trying to get something done over there, and it seems like sometimes it's pulling, feels like I'm pulling teeth to get some of that attention. We have similar needs down in the southeast, too. So, I'd just like to see the same enthusiasm and same motivation we're seeing on Paramore in the southeast, because we do need, it does a main gate to the city, and we do have some neighborhoods that need some attention around that area. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I think you're speaking of the 436 corridor.
Yes.
Wouldn't I speak of the southeast sector, that's more a little bit south of where you're speaking?
My district. My district. Yes, sir.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Sheehan, and then Commissioner Stewart, and then Commissioner Hill.
Well, and I'd like to say that I've served on the East Center Flore Regional Planning Council for 14 years, and I am the chairperson for the HUD Sustainability Grant of the East Center Flore Regional Planning Council. So, I have some knowledge of this, and, you know, that's what I get for sitting there for 14 years. I got appointed to a leadership position. And Paul, I just want to say that having listened to all the proposals from all the cities that are along Sunrail, you all did an amazing job. I have to tell you, a lot of folks did not embrace Sunrail, a lot of the cities... I have to tell you, a lot of folks did not embrace Sunrail, a lot of the cities did not embrace Sunrail, and put them in very undesirable locations because they thought it was going to be some kind of a problem. And now they're having to deal with the grant proposal and making redevelopment happen around a very undesirable location. They didn't put it in their downtowns. We have really an opportunity here to utilize the grant, to talk, and we've embraced redevelopment and the Paramore neighborhoods. So I think this is a great use. As someone who's served on this for a long time, if we have some additional opportunities, we will certainly look to those. Again, I've served on it for 14 years. If someone else would like to come and serve on it, I'd welcome that opportunity to step down and do something else on my Wednesdays once a month. So, again, we go where the need is. And this was an opportunity to, to work with the Sunrail, to work with a federal government grant. Again, this is for specific redevelopment. It was, it was just happened to be, it happened to be perfect timing for the, for HUD to come up with dollars when we needed to come forward with planning for the Paramore area. It was a perfect fit, it was a perfect opportunity. Usually we're talking about perfect storm, this was a perfect fit. And I just want to thank you and your staff because, again, this was, I would say that our presentation far and above blew away what everybody else did. Granted, I was prejudiced, but you all did an amazing job. And I know you worked a lot over your holidays to get this complete, and I want to thank you personally for that. And, again, we have a blueprint. When I first got elected in 2000, we had a blueprint, we had a visioning plan for the Mills and Colonial area. And now you have seen over 14 years what's that, what that has done. And it, sometimes it takes some time, but it's really worthwhile to have these visioning processes and planning processes because, again, it helps shape the future, and I want to thank you for that hard work. And, again, if there's any opportunities for, for something else to happen elsewhere, that, that's great. I'm always looking for, for opportunities to, to revitalize this entire city. But this, like I say, happened, this is not pitting one neighborhood against another. This just happened to be an opportunity to do something good for, for Paramore at the same time we're working with HUD grant. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Paul, thank you, and thank you for the work that you've done. I have a unique perspective of Paramore because I actually have worked there for 20 years.
Yes, sir.
And so, there's a couple of things that concern me, and I guess probably I just want to share them out loud to make sure that we're on the same page. For years, decades, maybe generations, we have said that, that the block between Central and Church on Paramore is the city center for Paramore. I understand the challenges that we have with the soccer stadium, but now we've, now we've taken and put the soccer stadium to block that area. I don't see in the plan a comprehensive approach to recreate that, that city center for Paramore. The challenge that you have is you have, you had a natural location, and, and I understand all the subtleties of that. But, but I'm more interested in where is, where does that piece that we have said for generations is the center? Where's that center going to be now? Is that center north of that area, is that center south of the area? Is it comprehensive to engage the entire area? That's a concern I have in terms of the planning portion because the soccer stadium was all in flux as we're doing this. Now all of a sudden, it goes from the soccer stadium being the edge of that city center to now being the middle of that area.
I, I think there's a couple of ways to think about that. I think the, I kind of breezed through it pretty quickly. I'm not sure if the map is back up, but, uh...
Some of the maps, even on the big page, it's hard, see, I want to go through them with you.
Right, but, but essentially, we, we talked about a historical and cultural heritage district along the central spine. And we think that the church and central corridors are where you're going to see that type of activity occurring, and then coming down south of the soccer stadium along Paramore, I think is where we would, where we'd imagine that type of central area for the neighborhood would be. Jim, did you want to?
I think two things. One is talking like a hierarchy of place. The, the Paramore area, the street south of the stadium, that's a neighborhood center. And it is a huge opportunity to create a unique identity for Paramore based on its culture and its heritage, the arts, restaurants that are destinations, you know, that type of thing. And that's where that should go. And we were concerned at first about the stadium location, but in a way, it just allowed us to really focus. When you're trying to redevelop something, as you all know, it's a block at a time, it's a street at a time. So this is going to allow you to focus on that corridor, okay? And I think that's actually a good thing, and I think the stadium will end up actually helping that. In terms of the economic center, the quote like city center, what we found out, the epiphany was that the economic center is really 441. Because the community that lived in Paramore and that relocated when they got the opportunity to get loans to buy single-family homes started to go west. So when you really look at that entire community, OBT is the center of it. And the biggest problem we have is everyone wants a grocery store in Paramore, right? I mean...
Need one.
Yeah, you need one. But how are you going to get one, you know, between OBT, okay, and basically Terry Avenue? There is no market there. The market's on 441. So the opportunity to take 441 and capitalize on what Paul said about the, the volume of traffic there, the wallets they're driving by, if you will, to be crude about it. And then also to, we've got two CRAs that have the ability to work within, within that area. So we think that's the economic center of what we would call the, the Paramore community. And that's where the opportunity is to make some big changes in terms of retail opportunities to serve those people. But the neighborhood, where we want to deal with a neighborhood scale that feeds off the cultural heritage of that community and the historical heritage of that community, that's really between Church Street, okay, and about two blocks south to South Street, right in that corridor. And by focusing the efforts there, I think there's actually more opportunity to do something really good there.
Yeah, but the, the opposing side is that the two primary neighborhoods you've identified, one north, one south of Central and Church.
Right, right.
I don't see in the plan that same, I believe that Church and Central may become the barrier for the northern community, so, northern neighborhood. So, so I don't see...
I think Terry and Westmoreland hook them together. And one of the things we've done, that school hooks them together.
Okay.
And so, the, the biggest challenge we have is the safe route to school. So those children who won't be able to take the bus, they're going to be walking from the south to the north. And that's going to really knit that together. And we've got a proposal for cycle track and so forth to help that safe walk to school and the walkable school bus and that type of thing. But I think, you know, when you bring the school back into the community, that is what really starts to knit that together.
I think you've got a good point. The other thing I don't see on here is I don't see the, the later phases of Creative Village. One of the ideas was that, that there's going to be a, a northern gateway, that's the extension of Edgewater Drive that goes into there. And, and so the question is, what's the impact now of a central location or an entry off of Colonial into that area that really kind of connects it towards that Southern College Park area? There'd be kind of this complement of what we're trying to do. In, in the maps I see, I don't even see the future of the, the future planning of Phase Four or Phase Five, I guess, of Creative Village, which gets, which really tends to abandon Paramore and tries to get into Creative Village from the, from the north.
Yeah, I mean, we assumed that whatever was planned for Creative Village would continue, and we haven't tried to, you know, bring that out on this map because it's more general. But we haven't changed, we, we haven't tried to change any of that. We think that's going to be, continue, the, the university's investment there is going to be complimentary and help that happen. What we were focusing on was, and this came out of pathways to Paramore, is that, you know, at, at, what is it? That Paramore is primarily a residential community. So we wanted to protect those residential neighborhoods. So we tried to stay away from anything that would put higher density and therefore higher values in there that would end up having the potential effect of driving, you know, individuals to other neighborhoods because they couldn't afford those. So that's, that, we stayed away from, you know, any, touching anything about the Creative Village other than the southern part of it, which is the educational hub.
Well, Paul, let's talk a little bit more outside of this. But I just, those are the two areas I've got is, where's now the center core that we want it to be? And then, and where's the northern entrance? If it's going to stay as Paramore and Colonial, which is fine, you, you have this natural entrance we're getting ready to build, I guess, planning to build with the Creative Village, which I think, my opinion would be, a great place for a grocery store is right there. Because that ends up also being a connection, the north-south connection versus the east-west connection.
We, we do, in the, in the vision plan map, we do show a node at that location, a, a, you know, a mixed-use node. It's not really emphasized as greatly as the Church Street and, and OBT one, but it is there. My only concern from that perspective is that a grocery store might be a little bit more difficult to cite in that area just because of the, of the depth of, of lots along Colonial. So that, that would be my only, just initial thought.
I understand, I just, I'm looking, I'm looking at an entryway more than, than the other.
Gotcha.
And thank you very much, I appreciate your, your commitment to...
Commissioner Hill, if it's okay with you, I'm going to go to Commissioner Ains and let you close us out. Commissioner Ains?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Paul, thank you for your, excuse me, your presentation, very thorough. One of the areas that, excuse me. One of the areas that I was looking at was the Paramore square piece that you talked about, open space and that kind of thing. What concerns me has been the displacement of black businesses in Paramore already. When you look at the gentrification numbers in 1960, as you quote, there'd been 18,000 population, and now today's time is down to 6,000. And of course, you know, when we've had the, the build-out and the selling of property here on Church Street for the sports and entertainment district, black businesses were closed, moved elsewhere outside of the area. But your plan does not include any place for them to come back to, to create that kind of business atmosphere. Now, in your plan, you do talk about the entrepreneurial aspect of it, but these are businesses that have been in business and now have closed and gone elsewhere or just gone out of business altogether. So, I, I would hope that your plan is a little bit more sensitive to the need of bringing in, or bringing back those businesses and considering building a place of business and strength for the community overall there. Any comments?
Jim, did you want to take? I mean, I, I think it's, it's interesting to note that when we, we went out to a focus group to look at the soccer stadium when it, when it moved over to the west, and we, we presented several different options for what could happen to the property directly to the east of the soccer stadium. And there was a discussion, maybe both sites should be economic development sites. You know, there was two, there was basically two parcels directly to the east. And I remember that we, we did several different options. One of the options actually had a, a mixed-use development on the north piece, a park on the south side, and a mirror, mirroring park on the southern piece, south of, of Church. And I remember the community very, very clearly saying, "No, we need to make sure that that block and those blocks immediately to the south of the soccer stadium are, are available for economic development purposes." So that was heard loud and clear from our perspective. Jim, did, did you want to say anything about that?
Well, number one, Kurt and I have been getting our hair cut by John Henry the last six months because we wanted to understand more about the businesses in Paramore, and there's no better place to do that than in his barber shop. And so, we're real sensitive to the, the issue you just talked about. And we really think that along Church Street and then south of Church Street, between Church and south, and from, you know, Paramore back over to Huey, that that block is where you really need to focus on and that there's enormous opportunities there. In addition, one of the things that we didn't do, if you recall, is we didn't try and take back any of the area that's zoned for, I guess, light industrial and business, that it's, it's along, what would it be, Central all the way to Robinson? And so there, we looked at those opportunities and we looked at them with our market expert to make sure that there was enough opportunity in there for businesses to regenerate or develop and so forth. We think that there's a real good base to provide that, to provide for those businesses.
Well, did your study include any comments from those businesses that closed? Just to find out where they are, what do they think, what were they thinking? How would they look in coming back into the area based upon this particular plan?
I don't think the market study did that. I know that, I know that there were interviews in the early stages of before, as, as they were developing the market study, they interviewed individual business owners in the neighborhood. But a post-business interview, I don't think that was done.
Yeah, and, and the other comment that I'd like to make too is, you know, this is half of the story that's being told concerning Paramore. Because you know there is another half to the story, and that's South Paramore, south of Gore Street, in the Holden Heights area, 18th Street, Grand Avenue, and all of that area that's experiencing the same things that North Paramore is experiencing. And I know your plan specifically deals with those areas that's outlined with Gore Street and Orange Blossom Trail and Edgewater Drive, et cetera, Colonial Drive, et cetera. But at the same time, you know, I don't want us to forget about the other side of that story of Paramore. And that's the south side of Paramore. And what we need to do as it relates with a, a comprehensive plan to do the same thing that we're trying to accomplish here in the north, and that's obviously revitalization, both economically and building great neighborhoods so that people feel healthy and safe in their environment. And so what, what would be happening is we would continue to have the same problems in the south portion of Paramore that we're trying to eliminate in the north portion of Paramore. And so my, my point is that we definitely do not forget about the other half of the story. Otherwise, we, we would need to change the street name of South Paramore to something else because it's not being represented by your plan at all.
And I understand that, that desire, and I think it, it makes a lot of sense for us to look at that as, as we prioritize all of our other projects that we'll be looking at over the next several years. That's definitely made the list for us to, to put on there. I think, I want to mention this also because I think the, the principles that we've developed or utilize in this plan, I think are very much transferable to other neighborhoods. And I think the principles that are here, we can certainly transfer those kind of principles into, into the southern portion of, of Paramore. And frankly, I would like to incorporate some of these healthy community principles into our overall comprehensive plan. Because I think it's probably, and at least in my mind, this is where the planning profession will be going. And what's funny about that is it's actually kind of going in a circular route. If you were to go all the way back to the beginning of the city planning profession, it was, it was all about health. And now it's just coming back again. So, so I, I hear you, I hear you.
Can I mention one quick thing? We took into consideration in terms of the Paramore area that we studied, the limo route especially, and, and everything inside that limo route, and what the opportunities were there in terms of mixed use. So all of that area in there is mixed use. There's a lot of things that planners can influence, okay, and that city councils can influence. But at the end of the day, it's a market decision. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't get in the way of the market and that we allowed a lot of flexibility, especially inside that limo route where you're basically get on and off free and you get that connection to Sunrail because we think that's a huge opportunity for, for Paramore, and it's going to start right within that limo route.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Gray?
Thank you. Commissioner Hill, I'll be quick so you can close us. Paul, Jim, thank you for your help. One observation I have here is, a lot of great parts of this plan, but clearly if you look what's going on today, Commissioner Ains mentioned, 6,000 population, plus or minus 25% unemployment, and those that are employed are making plus or minus 15,000. No matter what gets built in Paramore, unfortunately, I don't think a lot of those folks can support it. So I think while we, as we move forward, a suggestion is we, I think we need to focus on more job training, job creation. Because if people don't have money, they can't make housing, shopping, and education... housing, shopping, and education decisions. And likewise, if we don't at least make the effort to try to help get people trained and employed, as those that move in to re-energize and support this, I think Commissioner Enges is right, you're, you will disenfranchise those folks who live there even more than they are now. If they don't take advantage of it, they don't take advantage of it. But as we move forward, I'd, I'd like to encourage us, certainly we're going to have to help, prime the pump, so to speak, with, with, with housing and with construction. But I'd like to see, as if we're going to do that, to do job training and job creation, because if folks don't have jobs, a lot of those social issues are, have even a bigger prospect. That's stating the obvious, I know, but when I look at this, a lot of building, but the folks in Paramore today can't support it even if they wanted to without better income. So that was my only comment, but thank you for your, your work.
Well, thank you. And I want to say that, Commissioner, I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said. And I think, you know, we've focused on housing, we, we focused on the K-8 education, and the, and the other side, the job vocational training. I think maybe even more important than, or at least equally important with the UCF decision is the fact that the Valencia College will be part of that programmatic change that's coming to the neighborhood. We've already had some preliminary discussions with Felicia Williams from Valencia, and she has some really good ideas for vocational training and job training opportunities, and I think we have to do all those things if we want to really revitalize this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay.
Especially the areas that they want to bring hospitality...
Yes.
And some of the other programs to the neighborhood. All right, Commissioner Hill, your final words?
Yes, and I do believe the best social program is the job and education, and I want to reassure the council that I'm working diligently. When I came into office, I had a 100-day plan, and jobs and education was my main component. And I have been working in the community with community stakeholders to assist me with training, not just to people of Paramore, but those in District Five that might lack GED or lack training. As most know my story, I was a welfare mom. And the way I got back into society and becoming a productive taxpayer was because I went to nursing school and got a skill and a trade. So that's what I'm trying to do for my community, because I know we can build housing and build these buildings, but if they can't afford to stay there, it's fruitless. And I don't want to see one person not have the opportunities that's coming to the Paramore area, that we've been working hard, even the community partners have been working hard the last year, coming up with a blueprint. We need a blueprint to know where we're going. So this is the start of that. And that health component, that educational component, it's all in there. But we do know that if a person does not have adequate housing, I don't care, they're not going to want to go to school. If they don't have proper food, they're not going to want to achieve anything, because guess what? Self-preservation then become their main concern. So yes, we do need to get affordable housing. We do need to have this jobs and training, but I think we can do it all at the same time. I'm that hopeful, because we do have those in the community that's saying, "What can we do for those that are disenfranchised? What can we do for those that need a hand up but not a handout?" And so I want to reassure the council that, that I support this effort. I am, I don't always support it, but I've been working hard to make sure that these things are in place when housing come. As far as that gateway to Paramore, this is just something I've, you know, been in the area for 40 years, but we always thought, when you cross OBT, no matter where you was, you are now entering Paramore. So this is what the community has stated. This isn't something that the planning department said was the hub of Paramore, was Central. No. Anytime we came to Paramore, or people from Washington Shores or whatever came to Paramore, it was once you crossed OBT. And, and we do need, Paramore is a, a, a food desert, and a, a, a major public, so I'm not promoting publics or whomever, but whatever food chain comes to that Paramore does need to be strategically placed where not just Paramore people can take advantage of it, but those from Rock Lake, those from Clear Lake, those from Sunset, those from Mercy Drive. Because when Dixie just closed our only food store there, right there on John Young and O, and Colonial. So we don't have anything centrally located there for even District Six there in the community. Outside, if you go to Walmart over in the Washington Shores with a, a big food hub. And I'm thankful to say that I, I know people in Paramore have been catching that grapefruit chain coming downtown to the public, so that's been utilized. But we do need something centrally located somewhere there. And I just thank everyone for, for their efforts. Paul, I know this was a labor of love for you, you didn't do this just from a planning standpoint, you did this because you care. I, I've stood with you and, and I've spoken with you, and I know that you truly want to make a difference for the people there in Paramore. And I hope that we can duplicate this, this, this plan throughout the city where we have those that need a hand up and not a hand out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Paul. This will conclude our workshop for today.